Welcome and thank you. Slazakamotni Omateo, thank you everyone for being here. We're gonna start with our land acknowledgement. Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Thank you. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lijan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Vice Mayor McQuaid. On to item number two, roll call. City Clerk, can you please call roll?
Councilmember Hanson Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McKee is absent. Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. There were no closed session. We'll move on to number four, item number four, ceremonial matters, proclamation in honor of Angel A.J. Silva. Don't be shy, come on, stand right up here. You're in a good place now. You're about to escape the city. In honor of Angel A.J. Silva upon retirement from the City of Albany, whereas after 22 years of service to the City of Albany, Angel A.J. Silva has decided to retire from his position as lead maintenance worker within the public work department. And whereas A.J. was hired as a sewer and storm drain inspector in 2002, and as a sewer and storm drain inspector, he reviewed videos of sewer laterals, including quite a collection of VHA tapes with critters looking at the camera, inspected storm drains, sewer repair, and our replacement work, and issued a sanitary upper sewer lateral certificate of compliance required per the Albany Municipal Code for the title "Transfer New Construction or Major Remodel of a Property for Thousands of Albany Properties." And whereas A.J. transitioned to a maintenance worker and later was promoted as lead maintenance worker within Public Work Department, focusing on and responsible for operation and maintenance of Albany's sewer collection system. And whereas A.J. served as one of the negotiators representing city employees and the serviced employees International Union in several labor negotiations. And whereas A.J. has received certification from the California Water Environment Association in collection system maintenance and the National Association of Sewer Service Companies in Sewer System Inspection. And whereas A.J. has been an amazing resource and instrumental in Albany's effort to update and maintain the sewer collection system in compliance with regulations that protect water quality in Albany's creeks and the bay. And whereas A.J. has helped administer several projects over his years of service to enhance city infrastructure, including maintenance work on streets, sidewalks, debris collection, graffiti abatement, park and open space maintenance, and other public spaces. And whereas A.J. took pride in his work and served as the leader by helping train several new staff over his many years of service. And whereas A.J. brings a warm, kind, and supportive approach to serving the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City, that the Albany City Council hereby wishes to express his gratitude and appreciation to Angel A.J. Silva for his longstanding service to the City of Albany, and we extend our very best wishes to A.J. as he enters retirement. Congratulations, A.J.
Thank you very much. Do you want to give him a look? Thank you. Thank you for the appreciation. I'm honored by your recognition. Now I understand that some people call me Señor Sewer, or the Sewerman. But let's not get all gross up because as I always say, that is all organic. Now seriously, I'm grateful for the opportunity I've been received working for the City of Albany. I have been fortunate to have great bosses and coworkers, and with everybody that I have deal with the other departments. The work and dedication are a testament of the support I received from everyone. Thank you so much. It's been truly a blessing to work here. Thank you.
A.J., are there any public comments at this time? Any online, City Clerk? Any comments from council?
I just want to say how much we're gonna miss you, A.J. We're so grateful to have had you here in our city for so long and all the hard work and efforts, and always a smile on your face, and always just ready to pitch in and do what's needed. I just can't say enough, I'm so grateful to have had you here and to have worked with you on many, many Solano strolls, and yeah, you're gonna be very missed.
I don't expect, given all the sewer laterals you've seen, but you oversaw the replacement of our sewer lateral or did the inspection, and I was very happy to meet you, and I commend you that you are a solutions-oriented person, and that was remarkable, and it was a great joy to meet you. So thank you for all your service to the city.
I'll just echo what's been said. It's been such a pleasure working with you for so many years, and I think we can turn around what you said and say that you were a blessing to our city. Thank you so much.
I'll just end it with saying, Angel, thank you so much for your service. I'm a little bummed out you're leaving right as I become mayor, but I'm very happy to see that you were able to bring some of your family here to embrace and enjoy this moment, and hopefully retirement is just as exciting as looking at sewer laterals and the random critters you see in there. That closes ceremonial matters, and congratulations again, Angel. Moving on to item number five, city manager report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first announce to the council a appointment made to our department head team. Reyna Schwartz, your interim finance director, has agreed to serve in the role forthcoming as our permanent finance director. I'm very excited to share this news. I know as you've experienced her presentations and her work thus far, she brings a significant amount of expertise and competency that we look forward to building our team. We've had a handful of winter events, all in the same little period of time, so I hope our community had the opportunity to enjoy both our winter wonderland, which was on December 8th at the Community Center, including the Albany Jazz Band and the High School Choir. Appreciation to the library for hosting the High School Choir as well. Kids and adults enjoyed an afternoon of live music, treats, and a bunch of different activities. Appreciation to city staff for hosting this event and making it such a great turnout. On the same day, the winter on Solano was held. This is a city-sponsored event, one of the strolish events, another great turnout for that event. And we also had a holiday makers market, which involves the picnic on Solano area of Lower Solano with a bunch of different vendors out on the street. These are all great opportunities to shop locally for the holidays and draw our community out to gather in our commercial areas. So thank you for all the work and collaboration that went into those events. We now are accepting applications for the upcoming two-year term of city advisory bodies to the city council. All positions are available for application. The information is on our website, it's also posted at city facilities. Applications are available online, and if you need a paper application, please come to any of our city lobbies' counters, and we can print that out for you. Doesn't seem like that much time has passed, but it was certainly a busy morning for us here on December 5th. The tsunami warning that you may all have received on your cellphones, which was issued by the state in response to a 7.0 magnitude earthquake event in Northern California, resulted in that tsunami warning. I appreciate all of our city staff who immediately switched hats into disaster service workers, as all city employees have that shared role, to open our emergency operations center, understand the potential risk to the city and our community, and issue notices as soon as thoughtfully possible. And I underscore "thoughtfully" because it takes a minute to understand, you know, number one, what is a tsunami meaning? Tsunami warning mean to the City of Albany specifically? Number two, what areas of our city are most directly at risk? And then number three, of course, making sure that information is clear, concise, and accurate. So I appreciate all of our staff who were able to assist in that degree. Every one of these exercises is an opportunity for us to gain even more experience with regard to disaster planning and running through all the operations of our emergency center. A reminder that the winter and spring recreation classes are now open for registration. This can be done online, and also over the phone or at the counter at our community center. And as always, there is something for all agents. So take a look at our new activity guide, which was also mailed to all city addresses. Another reminder, the 2024 parcel tax exemption and renter rebate. This is actually an ongoing program. Those that qualify can receive assistance from our Albany Cares Program to help fill out the application and understand the associated paperwork that goes along with that. The phone number for that help is (510) 524-9283, and also, of course, on our website. Storm season is certainly here, and we continue to regularly update our website, albanyca.org/storm, for specific preparation information, and of course, any timely information that may need to be updated based on the particular events that could be experienced in town. We just gave a proclamation to one of our storm preparers, A.J. Silva, along with the rest of the maintenance team who prepare before, during, and after all storm events to try and maintain damage to the minimal as possible. Upcoming event, please save the date, Saturday, January 18th, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Albany teens and families are encouraged to come to the Albany Community Center from 11 to 2 for a service event leading up to Martin Luther King Jr. Day. At the Alameda County Library, in partnership with the city, we'll bring together a teen-founded nonprofits and other organizations to share their stories of giving back in their communities. We have a link on our website and also information posted at city facilities. And that completes my report. Thank you.
City Manager? If anyone attending would like to ask questions or comments about the city manager report, those online, please raise your hand, use the raise your hand button. You'll have one minute. If you're on the phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. And note that this is for questions and comments pertaining to the city manager's report only. If you have comments not on the agenda, the time for those is next.
Good evening. I had a question regarding the advisory boards. There is no financial advisory committee listed, just checking, and I wanted to find out if you guys could provide any update when that will, when we will get that put in place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You have a comment? City Manager, any response to...
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Actually, on your agenda this evening is the transition of the previous financial advisory committee into a council standing committee as directed by the council. Of course, this is for your review and potential action this evening, so I think we would address that further as part of that discussion.
Thank you, City Manager. Moving on to item number six, go to the city. This is for attending to provide the council comment, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. If you're online, please raise your hand now, or by phone, star nine. As a note, by state law, known as the Brown Act, council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to as future agenda item or to staff for comment. Do we have any attendees in person?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stephen Albert. I again ask why the city follows only the minimum state mandate of notifying those within 300 feet of proposed new construction regardless of project size, when in fact for years, other municipalities have varied notification distances based on project size. Additionally, why hasn't 300-feet notification been submitted as a meeting agenda item to allow for in-depth public discussion? Alerting only those within 300 feet of new construction is inappropriate for large multi-story projects which will impact all of Albany. Such was the case for the five-story mixed commercial residential structure approved for 1600 Solano, which if built will drastically alter the character of Solano Avenue. Over the past year, I've documented the months of non-responses, obfuscation, and/or outright lies by city officials as to why Albany cannot expand notification beyond 300 feet. Briefly, last December, Community Development Director Bond falsely asserted that state law precluded issuing citywide alerts for new construction. Pursuant to a quest for documents, Director Bond was forced to forward California Government Code 65091, Notification Procedures. Section A4 details mailing hearing notices to those within 300 feet of new construction, directly below its subsection 5C, which reads, "In addition to notice by this section, a local agency may give notice of a hearing in any other manner it deems necessary or desirable." Following months of nonresponsiveness, Councilman Jordan and the city attorney finally cited two state laws which they contend might be construed to preclude different notification distances based on project size. Real-world experience indicates that these laws are irrelevant to public notification for new construction. In response to questions about the City of Beverly Hills' use of 500 and 1,000-feet notifications for different-sized projects since 2014, and whether this practice has ever resulted in legal challenges, Community Development Director Michael Forbes replied, quote, "It's not uncommon for cities to have different noticing requirements depending on the type or size of project," end quote. To our knowledge, our requirements have not been challenged. On October 21st, Councilman Jordan incorrectly reasserted that Code 6508 enacted in 2023, quote, "prohibits cities from discriminating on the basis of their size." Director Forbes replied to this misinformation. "The City of Beverly Hills has not altered its noticing practice based on Code 6508 or any other state law." City officials provided verbatim copies of all emails exchanged with Director Forbes. The responses he provided refute assertions that state laws preclude varied notification distances based on project size. "I understand that the city is under pressure to build additional housing and the impacted density bonus." Density bonus aside is the reason the five-story structure at 1600 Solano had to be approved or submitted. At the very least, the council should have insisted...
Thank you for your comment.
...the building have crass and self-efficacy.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, this is Neill and Michael. I attend Albany High, and I'm here with TUPi, a program that we have at Albany High. It's a tobacco use prevention education program. Last time we were, we gave public comments, we were talking about stopping the sales of tobacco in Albany, and I was just bringing this up to see what progress we've made with that, and how we can push this process along the line. And as, I just wanted to say, as a student going to Albany High, I see firsthand how, like, badly impacted other students are, and how easily accessible tobacco products are to the youth, even in Albany, when there's not as many smoke shops as there might be other places. And I really, truly believe that stopping the sales of tobacco in Albany will help the nicotine addiction, nicotine and tobacco addiction problem amongst our youth. And yes, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Tyler Shulson. I'm a student at Albany High School. I also am in the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program. And we're, yeah, so basically, we're just trying to stop the sale of tobacco in Albany. And I like walk around the school in Albany, and I know people who smoke, and I just hated seeing them change after they started smoking. They were more aggressive, they were rude, they were less attentive in class. And I just know that the people of Albany and the people at the school and my friends would greatly benefit from not being, or from the sales of tobacco being stopped in Albany. So I would just love to get the ball rolling on that again. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, any response from city staff on any of the inquiries that popped up?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that staff had looked into this when it was originally raised with regard to the potential legal risks, and we can follow up with a more substantive report to the council and aim to engage with that group at the high school as well on any particular points of interest.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a city council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to discuss an item separately at a pool?
I need to recuse from 7:5. I've been working on that event. If there's a financial impact from the city to the event, I'll just recuse myself.
Okay.
Can I stay here, though? Okay.
Do any members of the public wish to pull an item?
I can make a motion if you'd like, Mayor. So I will move consent calendar items 7-1 through 7-4 and 7-6, and then I'll take 7:5 separately, since we have a recusal on that.
One second. I'll second.
Council, Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mickey's absent, so the motion carries.
Do clerk, and I will move item seven-five.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey's absent. Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Recused.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We have no presentations, our public hearings, our unfinished business this evening. Wow, we're going through this fast tonight.
Taking it easy on you on first time running the chair.
We get to the fun stuff, though. Item 11, new business. We'll start with item 11-1, establishing city council standing committee.
Turn my mic on. Thank you, mayor. This is a follow-up item to action taken by the city council with regard to your review, which typically occurs every two years at the end of a term regarding the advisory bodies to the city council that provide recommendations to the city council. If you recall, on November 18th, the council directed staff to formulate a draft potential establishing resolutions for two different forms of standing city council committees. One, which is currently in your draft resolution, referred to as an audit and fiscal sustainability city council standing committee, and two, a public safety city council standing committee. As a reminder, these would be subject to the Brown Act, meaning that you would meet in public, and as such, as a committee, two members of the council maximum would serve on these bodies. The bodies would be advisory to the council, meaning that any recommendations would be brought back to the full council for deliberation and potential action. In terms of the proposed charge for each of these new standing committees of the council, first I'll walk through what we've drafted for the audit and fiscal sustainability standing committee. This would be basically all of the major work items that come through the finance department to the city manager's office and come before the full city council. This would provide potentially and encouragingly an opportunity for a more in-depth conversation on a lot of the topics that come to the council when you may have a fairly full agenda and we're really just working through the mechanics and receiving reports and moving on. Hopefully, we can have some more depth and dialogue with regard to these standing committees. So basically, it would be your annual audit, allocation of reserves as related to the audit, several other financial policies that come before the council. A summary of those includes the general fund reserve policy, capital reserves policy, and the pension funding policy. Also, of course, the two-year budget and mid-year budget updates, long-term financial forecasts and fiscal planning, taxes, fees, other revenue development, and certainly unfunded pension liability. I'd like to note that this is our first step in formalizing these standing committees. Should the resolution warrant edits or modifications or refresh over time, that is the beauty of a resolution. It can be done at one meeting, so this is a great starting point, I would say, potentially with some refinement by the council, or as you grow in this standing committee and experience the opportunity, some reflection potentially at year's end. Second committee as proposed is the public safety committee. Understandably, this would primarily involve our fire department and police department, along with administrative staff who help with disaster preparedness. Summary of topics to work through would involve disaster preparedness, also the city's CERT program and how that correlates with our nonprofit community CERT program, fire prevention, fire protection, primarily Albany Hill, and how that correlates to overall planning, emergency medical response. Some of those are annual reports, so you would receive status and data year over year to help potentially formalize additional policy considerations, funding needs, whatnot, community policing and related engagement, crime prevention, parking enforcement, and emerging technology to enhance public safety services and community safety. The proposed meeting days for each of these groups would be on Mondays, so the second and fourth Monday fits nicely into the overall Monday flow for the council. It also enables the remainder of the calendar to stay open for your other advisory bodies, and the busy calendar that we have from month to month with that regard, we also share this space with the Board of Education, and so that further adds to the demand of the calendar. Should the council wish to adopt these resolutions tonight, it is also advised that the council select two members to serve on each of these advisories to the city council. Staff would then work with the two new standing committees and associated members to get our first meetings up and running and really roll up our sleeves and get to work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions from council? Just a quick question of clarification. If a council member has indicated previously that they have an interest in one of these committees, they could still be appointed to that committee without being, or without being present this evening, correct?
Right. And I believe Councilmember Mickey provided his feedback with regard to his interest to the mayor as advised by the city attorney.
Thank you. And then, secondly, just for a point of clarification for anyone who may be listening, the standing committee members, whether it's the audit and fiscal sustainability committee or public safety city council standing committee, do have the ability to agen, seek to agendize particular topics if they do feel it's necessary, correct?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. At this point, we will take public comments, seeing no one in the room. Any public comments online? No public comments, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. I will say that Councilmember Mickey has indicated that he would like to be considered for the audit and fiscal sustainability city council standing committee. So if there's anyone else who is eager to jump at that, we may have that rounded out pretty quickly.
Would be interested in serving on that committee?
I was also going to suggest that I would be interested as well, so just-
We might have to rock, paper, scissors right now. I will also communicate that I would be deeply interested in serving on the public safety committee. If anyone else has interest in serving that, I would be more than happy to have some teamwork.
I have interest in that.
Okay. Looks like we got, there we go.
Yeah, what to do? I wonder if maybe we should put this off until John is here, or Councilmember Mickey, and have a fuller conversation. That would be reasonable.
Could I suggest that if only two of us express interest in public safety, that we could move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
We got work to do.
Looking for a motion?
So in that regard, I will move Resolution 2024-88 and 89, if I may do that in one motion. Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, I will move to appoint Mayor Lopez and Vice Mayor McQuade to the public safety committee.
I'll second.
All right, I'm writing a little slow. Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, team.
We need a motion to postpone the other committee until January, or is that just understood? Okay.
Thank you. It's noted, and I'll make sure that's on your January 20th meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11-2, city council appointment to county and regional bodies. City staff, any?
Good evening, council. This is an annual item for the council to discuss the appointment to county and regional bodies where representation of the city is required. The council reviews and update these appointments to the county and regional bodies typically annually in December. The city council procedure and policy includes guideline for these appointments, which is included in the staff report, and staff is recommending council to update these appointments as necessary per the guidelines and to make appointments to all county and regional bodies to ensure the city is represented. I've placed on the dais for your convenience a blank worksheet for the upcoming year. Just one minor note, I think the blank sheet says Rousher College of Natural Resources, and I believe it is currently called the UC Giltrack Community Farm Advisory Committee, but basically, it's the same body. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah. So Albany has been unable, with effort on various people's part, to get a representative to the, it's called the PAPCO Committee, or the Alameda County Per Transit Advisory and Planning Committee. And so I'm wondering if, and I apologize, I didn't look up the bio lives myself ahead of time, if staff happens to know, can a council member serve that capacity?
I believe there are qualifications that need to be met. So if the council members meet those qualifications, I can definitely double-check to see if that works.
Okay. I'll try to look them up now on the fly while we're doing other stuff.
Any additional questions from council? Moving on to public comments, anyone online? Bring it back to council for discussion. This is the fun part where we all fight it out. I will share some commentary from Councilmember Mickey that he has indicated that he would love to continue representing Albany at the League of Cities. He currently holds one of the large Alameda County appointments for the East Bay, so it would probably be a disservice to not have him continuing that role of serving for us as well. He would like to continue to be an appointee or continue as an alternate for the East Bay Sports Field Recreational Authority, JPA, for the Alameda County Transportation Committee. He would like to continue as an alternate, unless Preston wishes not to serve. ABAG does not wish to serve anymore, but that's probably one I would love to step up to. I believe that rounds it out for the preferences that Councilmember Mickey has indicated. Very obvious, I am to be appointed to the Alameda County Mayor's Conference with Vice Mayor McQuade as my alternate. I think for the League of Cities, I'm okay with Councilmember Mickey continuing as the appointee and myself serving as an alternate. And this is just me going down the list right now. And act mad, I can no longer serve due to time conflicts. I will just probably jump down to what I am agreeable to serve on. I'm agreeable to serve as the appointee for ABAG as well. I have strong preference to serve as the appointee for the Ava Community Energy, JPA Board, and also continue in my capacity for the Giltrack Farm Advisory Committee. With that said, if anyone on council at this moment feels like they have something they strongly would like to serve on or serve as an alternate.
I would like to continue working with Stop Waste and that group correlates well with the business district as well that I've got, you know, connections with, so. And did you say Mickey wanted to be the alternate for JPA? So I would be willing to stand up as a primary for that.
Yeah, of the ones you mentioned, I would be happy to be an alternate for ABAG. I spoke to former councilmember Tiedemann, and he apprised me that what's coming up is in our wheelhouse in terms of expertise. Maybe you already knew that, but I didn't realize ABAG was involved in Bay Conservation and with the Climate Adaptation Bond passing, there's going to be a lot of work on that, so. There's only, only one meeting unless one gets appointed, so I don't imagine I'll be going, but I'd be happy to be an alternate.
Sounds good, thank you. Any other board that come to your mind, Councilmember Jordan?
I would like to continue on the County Transportation Commission. In particular, there's some rather unique events occurring there now that also having people who've been on the commission continue on the commission would be useful to the agency. Aside from that, I'm happy to serve on preferably anybody or nobody, but if, as the council prefers, the meets during the day, it's hard for me to attend meetings at night because of my wife's situation.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor McQuade, any preferences that you have at this moment?
Well, I'm happy to be the alternate at the mayor's conference. I am interested in the League of Cities, but I see no reason we can't have three people. I mean, it doesn't matter, so that's fine. Sorry, I got a little bit lost here, I'm sorry. Do we, do we have an alternate for ACTC?
Yeah, so, well, so Councilmember Mickey expressed an interest in remaining alternate. He was an alternate before, so.
I just couldn't remember all of it, I heard. We have an alternate for waste management?
I think I was the alternate, but I'm happy to weigh on that. I think I was the alternate before. Yeah, okay. Not that I ever needed to step in. Thank you for your service.
And do we have an alternate for Ava?
I think, I think Councilmember Mickey maybe was the alternate, but I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fine.
No. I don't believe he expressed interest in Ava, at least not my note.
Right, okay. I was looking backwards rather than forward. Forward is what matters, so, right, he didn't express an interest.
City clerk, do you want to put the current list up so that we can see the current alternate?
Current, the current one?
Yeah, that's listed on the agenda for current reference.
And obviously, I stay on the housing authority.
I would be willing to serve for the Alameda County Library Advisory Commission. I know you were previously serving on that.
Yeah, so it's, I enjoyed it. Albany being the northern outpost by quite a bit, incident does involve travel, but it meets four times a year, and it's an opportunity to, you know, get to see other cities in the county and their libraries, and, yeah, so it's actually pleasant and hopeful as compared to some things that one encounters, so uplifting, I guess I should say.
So, yeah, so I'm more than happy to have myself listed at the appointee for the Alameda County Library Advisory Commission. And if anyone feels to be an alternate, thank you. Anyone feels to be an alternate, thank you.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'm happy to be the alternate on any of these.
Have we had anyone commit yet to the mosquito abatement district yet?
We haven't, so it meets at 5:00, obviously in Hayward, but probably, I mean, the margin, but that would work reasonably for me. And I have served on it before, and I have some outstanding ideas that I was...
They, I will say that when they found out that I was moving to mayorship and you were still serving on council, there were some folks interested in wondering if you were gonna come back.
Really?
And the meetings are hybrid, so.
Oh, they are.
So I've had, have major schedule conflict with my children and daycare pickup, so I've been able to have my meetings at the community center, just as long as publicly posted.
Oh, great, yeah, that would, that would be fantastic.
Unless you're willing to post your address publicly, you could do it from home.
Okay. Is wheelchair accessible, as it turns out? Okay, no, that's fantastic, thank you for letting me know, that makes all the difference, some difference, I would do it anyway, but, yeah, thank you.
I think I just have one blank left, that's for the Ava Community Energy alternate? Did I miss something?
Happy to do it, if nobody else wants to.
I would be, it's on 6:00 PM, but I would be interested in that. I mean, it's, you know, a hyper wonky energy topic, which I deal with laterally at my day job, so.
Okay, if I can repeat just to make sure, to confirm everybody's interest, is Alameda County Mayor's Conference, of course, it's a mayor and the vice mayor. The League of California Cities East Bay is Councilmember Mickey as the appointee and Mayor Lopez as the alternate. The Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District is Councilmember Jordan as the appointee, no alternate. Alameda County Transportation Commission, Councilmember Jordan is the appointee and Councilmember Mickey is the alternate. Alameda County Waste Management Authority, Councilmember Hanson Romero is the appointee and Councilmember Jordan is the alternate. East Bay Sports Field Recreation, JPA, Councilmember Hanson Romero is the appointee and Councilmember Mickey is the alternate. Ava Community Energy, JPA Board, the appointee is Mayor Lopez, the alternate is Councilmember Jordan. Housing Authority of County of Alameda continues to be Councilmember McQuade. Alameda County Library Advisory Commission is Mayor Lopez as the appointee and Councilmember, Vice Mayor McQuade is the alternate. And lastly, the UC, sorry, the UC Giltract Farm Committee is Mayor Lopez as the appointee.
I'm sorry, who's ABAG?
The mayor. ABAG, the mayor is the appointee, Councilmember Jordan is the alternate.
Okay.
And then I'll just state, seeing as my name is listed for several appointed positions, if anyone has a dying yearning to take over for, at the primary appointee for the Library Advisory Commission, I'm more than happy to relinquish that.
Welcome to it. I'm right behind ya. Need a motion?
Just, you asked for a public comment?
Do, oh, asking for a public comment now? Any public comment? Nope. Alright, looking for a motion?
I'll move the appointments to the county and regional bodies. I'll second.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuade.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, City Clerk, and thank you, council colleagues.
If I may, Mayor, so I found the eligibility requirement for Papco. It says, and I guess just to be clear for anybody who's listening, this is the Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, which is one of its, I think, three advisory bodies if I recall correctly, and advises on transportation for people who are disabled and for seniors. And so that turns out to be eligibility requirement. Members must be an Alameda County resident, an eligible user of any transportation service available to seniors and people with disabilities in Alameda County. So no, many of us in this body will qualify for that. My guess is maybe two, maybe one. I don't know what the senior cutoff is for transit services. Since I'm serving on the commission, I would imagine I cannot serve on the advisory body. So that would reduce it to one council member who happens to be vice mayor, so I don't want to put you in the hotspot, we can talk about it later if you want to think about it. But it's just, it's been a very hard body to find anybody to serve on because by its nature, under current state law, it's interesting, this idea of setting up satellites, I wonder if that would work. But, but so far, satellite locations have not been implemented, and so everybody has to actually get to the agency's offices to meet, and that's obviously kind of contrary to eligibility requirements. And so it has got a lot of vacancies. And, and the agency did support changing state law. There was a bill to change the requirements for advisory bodies so that they could have hybrid meetings, and that unfortunately didn't pass. And the agency, with suggestion from the commission, is gonna push again for that bill to be solely for bodies that are specifically to serve people who are disabled and seniors, to see if we can actually get that through. But for the moment, people are still required to meet in person, so that's very hard to, well, we haven't succeeded. Staff has tried, I've tried, and we haven't succeeded in finding somebody who would serve on that, and so that's the backstory.
Let me give it some thought.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan, for information. I think that's also very helpful to future iteration on council on how to maybe navigate this, or even perhaps for us as city council members and city staff on how to get that information out to the general public if we are able to appoint a representative.
I think that you're mentioning that Akmad, the mosquito abatement district, has the satellite here, and it occurred to me like, why don't we, can we do that for advisor bodies? And if so, why don't we do that? I mean, every city could have a satellite, and this would actually solve the problem, so, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion around item 11-2, we'll move on to item 11-3, City Council Appointments to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. City staff?
Oh, yep, me again. Good evening. The item before you now is the appointment of alternate to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. Per City Charter Section 9.01, each board member can have alternates designated. These alternates may serve for a period of up to one year unless, again, appointed. So this is an annual item. Staff is recommending council to select a council member to serve as Mayor Lopez's alternate and reappoint the other alternate as recommended in the staff report. Happy to answer any questions if there are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Do we have any public comments online?
No.
No? Bringing it back to council for a discussion?
I'd be interested in being the alternate.
Thank you, and I think that...
Or get all my financial advice.
I think that makes the most sense. Any other discussion among council? Looking for a motion?
I might move that Vice Mayor McQuade be the alternate.
Second.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor McQuade.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are getting through this quick. My son's gonna be really happy. Moving on to item number 12, Council Subcommittee Reports. Councilmembers, opportunity to provide any reports. I imagine may be a little slim this time around, but we'll see what we have. We'll start over with Councilmember Hanson Romero, any report?
Report that I do have is actually, I will be in need of my alternate Wednesday, so.
Okay. First time. Thank you for notifying me.
Thank you. Any reports from Councilmember Jordan?
No, there's been no meetings of the Transportation Commission or the Library Commission, yeah.
Just for sake of formality, any...
I have lots. The Housing Authority did meet last week. It struck me funny that for the two years I wasn't on council, I wrote these very long reports that I'm sure you poured over, but now I'm gonna give oral reports, they'll be ever so much briefer. But one thing we did work on were amendments to the Housing Choice Vouchers Administrative Plan, basically around the Veterans Supportive Housing Program. And it all just fits under the HUD guidelines, and as they change, we change, so it's pretty simple. We also talked a little bit about our outside inspection company as we just changed vendors and wanted a little more information. Albany still has 11 units under contract with our residents paying about 20% of the contract rent. With the opening of this new SAHA project, there will be five project-based vouchers attached to that, which means that those vouchers stay with the project. So if the person that has the voucher moves on, the voucher stays. And I just want to highlight the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. They, once a year, they have a, what they call a shining star event, where they highlight people that have graduated from school, got new jobs, bought a house. It's an incredible event, and it'll be January 25th. But the reason I wanted to highlight that was not only is it a wonderful event, but this year, the Albany Rotary Club donated $1,000 to support their various awards for both youth and adults. So that's pretty exciting. I also attended the mayor's conference in Emeryville, where there was a speaker on the East Bay Regional Communication System Authority. I spoke to the Cub Scouts on Albany Government and tried to explain to nine-year-olds ranked choice voting. It wasn't easy. And I also attended the event on Saturday honoring Congresswoman Barbara Lee on her retirement, or retirement from Congress. Who knows what's next?
Thank you, and I will say those Cub Scouts certainly grill a council member with questions. I've met with them before. Those are the most adamant people in the demographic and community concerned about sidewalk safety. Now, I'll never forget, I did a meeting with one of them, and this little boy said, "What are you gonna do about the sidewalks? Every day I walk to school, and there's leaves everywhere." I was like, "Okay, you need to run for council." Yeah. In terms of me, very light meeting load this past month. But in terms of official meeting, Giltract Farm is working on having a bit more formal structure with subcommittees and sub-working groups. Wasn't able to make their fundraising group, but they are working on trying to strategize on long-term sustainability in terms of funding and working between the UC and getting, just more or less getting ear from the city to understand or get a sense of what could benefit the community. For the mosquito abatement district, it was a bit of a bittersweet meeting for me. My last meeting with them, serving. It was also, right before the meeting is also our ceremonial event in which we dedicate the lab space at the district in honor of Jan Washborne. I know I had mentioned this several months back about the passing of Jan Washborne, and so we were able to have this beautiful moment where Jan's husband was in attendance and Jan's brother, and we got to hear a lot about Jan's life outside of mosquitoes. But it was really beautiful to see his face and his image on a plaque right outside the lab space and to see his husband enjoy it with us, and then also hear about Jan's life work, especially around LGBTQ rights, and being one of the, one of the first voices in the area to have to speak up and sitting in a, in an influential body because decisions that were being made in the 90s and the 2000s definitely had an impact on his own life. So it was amazing to hear this intersectionality of someone's life, not just connected to mosquitoes. But I would highly encourage anyone here at the dais or anyone in public who's listening, maybe consider doing a trip or a visit to the, to the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Office and Lab. And they're always looking to show and highlight what they're doing as well. The district is also actively developing their, it was round to my tongue, their fish breeding pools. So I don't know if you remember being there in the past, Councilmember Jordan, but they have this whole back area. So now they, that's where they're breeding fish that can ideally be requested by community members in a county to help consume mosquitoes and minimize impact. In terms of things non-council related, as mentioned earlier by our city manager, we had several events on December 8th, and there was just a lot going on that just couldn't talk about during our December 9th council meeting. But I was able to attend several of those events that were happening, that jam-packed weekend. Got to, my chief of staff got to meet Santa, and he wasn't, he wasn't too happy. Clearly someone snitched on him that he was naughty this year. We also got to check out the Winter Wonderland event and got to watch my chief of staff make a cardboard gingerbread house, which is very cute. I wouldn't consider a house after he was finished with it. But all in all, it was really great to be engaged in these local community events and then see fellow council members like Councilmember Hanson Romero at these events. And just seeing that community really responded well to these events. And I hope we can do our city staff right in continually supporting them in events that they put on for our community. With that said, we, do we have any public comments online? Seeing no public comments, moving on to item number 13, future agenda item. Any comments?
Actually, if I could just say a word about Jan, because when I was on the body, I learned that the Director gave me a ride back to Bard, so we had a chance to talk. And he relayed some of the history of the district to me, and it was, went through a period of really traumatic dysfunction maybe 20 years ago. And the director was let go, I think it's fair to say. I don't know if he technically resigned or was let go, but either way, needed to go, along with the director of the lab. And Jan stepped in, drop of a hat, to be the director, given his many different skills that he had and expertise in the field and served as director for three years, you know, and he was a board member. So that is pretty, you know, unusual and astounding that somebody has skills to be on both sides of, both sides of that situation. So our county really does owe his memory a lot.
Thank you for that, and I think that drops a seed in that, something that was brought up at that meeting, that Jan's presence on that board is why our district in Alameda County is considered like the gold standard throughout the country. And that's why I say the meeting was a bit bittersweet for me, because I did thoroughly enjoy my time being on that board. And I know you're gonna enjoy being back on it, and any council members, if you ever do want to join it in the future, I highly encourage it because it is eye-opening. It's also, it feels impactful to know that you're part of a group that is actively working to safeguard the integrity of our community, specific to the dangers of mosquitoes. to safeguard the integrity of our community, specific to the dangers of mosquitoes. They may be little, but they pack a lot of harm.
Yeah, and I will just offer for what we pay, which I think is $6 a property or something, it's pretty, pretty amazing what we get, and as a scientist, a research institution, I was amazed, it's not just the goal, you know, it's not just a TOF offline, I've been at other agencies, but, you know, we're the best, but I was shocked when I got there that they actually publish multiple papers in peer-reviewed scientific journals each year, you know, what, what government agency does that, and, you know, have a long history of advancing the field, like developing integrated pest management in terms of mosquito abatement, so it really is a remarkable organization.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, future agenda item, are there any public comments, City Clerk? Any comments from council for future agenda item?
I have one. I'm, I'm gonna bring an agenda item to create an ad hoc committee on equity issues. I think these are better handled at the council level than the way we're doing it right now.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, announcement of city meetings and events, as you heard earlier from the city manager, our next council meeting likely will not be till later in January, but all information regarding city meeting events can be found online and on the city calendar's webpage. At this time, we are at item number 15, enjoyment. I know you all are wondering, just tell me when to go, tell me when to go. I will say thank you all who took part in today's meeting, and as I close this out this evening, and we'll close out every time in the future, I say, diasu miamu. Thank you.